Now we'll call the Board of Supervisors into session for the Monday, April 25th. Board meeting. We'll start with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom?
Kevin? Uh, we do not.
Okay. Move along to the proclamations. There are no proclamations for approval at this meeting. Next, we go to the approval of the meeting, minutes of the meeting of April 18th, 2022.
Move approvals.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Next, we go to consent items. We have a class LC liquor license for Graceland Tavern. Class LC liquor license for Dockside Bar and Grill, and a special Class C liquor license, parentheses BW Rivers Massey Marina.
I'll make a motion to approve all three consent items.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we go to procurement procedures. We have receipt of quotes. Culvert replacements on various roads, project L dash C two, three, parentheses, one dash seven, three, three, one. Kevin, Mary.
Good evening, everybody. For this, we have 10 bids. The first bid is from Connolly Construction, Inc., and their bid bond is complete. And that bid amount is $209,465.41. That's $209,465.41. The second bid is from JPT Incorporated. Their bond is complete. And that bid amount is $235,240.00. That's $235,240.00. The third bid is from Keter Equipment. Their bid bond document is complete. And that amount is $195,569.70. That's $195,569.70. The fourth is from Mainline Excavating Company, and their bond paperwork is complete. And that bid amount is $224,666.78. That's $224,666.78.
Where are they from, Kevin?
They are from Dubuque, Iowa, Siple Court.
Okay.
Continuing on with this marathon opening of bids.
It's good. Good to see there's a lot of competition.
Absolutely. We have McDermott Excavating, and their bid documents are complete. And this bid amount is for $198,712.70. That's $198,712.70. My apologies for the delay. They wrote that out. It was not looking for words. The next bid is from Progressive Structures out of Luxembourg, and their bond paperwork is complete. And that bid amount is $240,990.60. That's $240,990.60. The next bid is from Rays Excavating, and their bond paperwork is complete. And they are out of Edgewood. Their bid amount is $211,827.88. That's $211,827.88. All right, next up, we have Stager Construction, and their bond paperwork is complete. And that bid amount is $219,177.60. That's $219,177.60. Next up, we have Top Grade Excavating, and their bond paperwork is complete. This bid comes in at $288,784.60. That's $288,784.60. And the final bid from Chig Fry, and their bond paperwork is complete. And the bid amount is $246,950.09. That's $246,950.09. And that completes the opening of the bids for this agenda item.
I will receive the bids and refer them to the county engineer for review and advice.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to accept the bids and refer to the county engineer for his determination. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we go to the receipt of quotes, HMA resurfacing and culvert replacements on Flanagan Road and James Road. Project LFM dash P two, three, parentheses, five, dash, seven, X, dash, three, one.
Good evening. We have one bid for this project, and the bid documents are, the bond documents are complete. Everybody wants the culverts. Nobody wants the resurfacing. That bond amount is $2,532,484.25. That's $2,532,484.25. That completes the bids for this agenda item.
River City Paving, or Matthew?
My apologies. That is, uh, River City.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion to receive the bid from River City Paving and refer that to the county engineer for his recommendation.
Second.
Yeah, we'll motion a second to accept the bid, refer to the county engineer for his determination. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Next, we go to public hearing for amendment to zoning ordinance. And bring that up. For May 9th at 9:00 AM. Here's the beat, four cases on that.
Motion to approve the notice of public hearing.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the notice of public hearing for the amendments to the zoning ordinance. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have approval of Platts, a resolution to approve final plat, John Burke, Bergfeld's Farm, number two. Do we have anyone for context?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Tammy.
Okay. This property is known as the John Bergfeld's Farm Number Two Final Plat. The property is owned by Wilford and Darlene Vorwold Family Living Trust and is located 1.18 miles northwest of the city of Farley along US Highway 20, with a total of 228.66 acres surveyed. This property is owned A1 Agricultural and A2 Agricultural Residential on zoning case number 0206 of 22. The purpose of the plat is to separate the existing home and buildings and to be able to sell it to a relative. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 223.71 acres surveyed, and it will remain in agricultural use and will be sold in the future. Lot two is a total of 4.95 acres surveyed, and it will remain in current agriculture use, and it'll get sold to a relative. Lot one and lot two will share an existing 66-foot wide access and utility easement off of US Highway 20. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. There are no mortgages on this property, and some of the signatures were over 60 days old, and they included. The surveyor, January 24th of 2022, engineer, February 7th of 2022, county planning and zoning, February 15th, 2022. County Platts Officer, February 15th of 2022, owner's consent, February 9th, 2022, and county health, February 18th of 2022. This plat's been reviewed by myself as Platts Officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. This is a follow-up plat from a zoning case that you had heard back in February. Does anybody have any questions for me?
A motion to approve the final plat, John Bergfeld's Farm, number two.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat, John Bergfeld's Farm, number two. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat, John Bergfeld's Farm, number three. Tammy?
Okay. This property is again owned by the Vorwold Family Living Trust and is located 0.85 miles northwest of the city of Farley along US Highway 20, with a total of 69.804 acres surveyed. The property is owned A1 Agricultural. The purpose of this plat is to clean up the access and title issues before this land can be sold. The survey creates three lots. Lot one is a total of 0.474 acres surveyed, and it's a non-buildable lot. This lot's been used as an access and utility easement. Lot two is a total of 31.608 acres surveyed and will remain in current agriculture use, and it'll be sold in the future. Lot three is a total of 37.722 acres surveyed, and it will remain in current agriculture use, and it will also be sold in the future. Lot one is used as an access and utility easement only, and lot two and lot three will use an existing shared field entrance off of US Highway 20. There were no additions, corrections required for this plat. There are no mortgages on the property, and some of the signatures, again, were over 60 days old, and they included. Surveyor, February 15th of 22, engineer, February 7th of 22, county planning and zoning, February 15th of 22, county Platts Officer, February 15th of 22, owner's consent, February 9th of 22, county assessor, February 2nd of 22, county health, February 18th of 2022. This plat's got, been reviewed by myself as Platts Officer. It has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is a follow-up to the plat that we just did because there is some title issues. And Mr. Dave Schneider worked very diligently to make sure that these things were corrected. And with that, he had to create this plat so that when the sale goes through, that there's not some title issue that doesn't allow this property to be sold and, uh, and, uh, and be able to be recorded properly. Does anyone have any questions?
I will make a motion to approve the final plat for John Bergfeld's Farm, number three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of John Bergfeld's Farm, number three. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat, Z1 Acres Plat Number Two.
Correct. Okay, the property is owned by Daniel and Julie, Zouin Revocable Trust, and John Zouin, and is located, partially located within the city limits of city of Luxembourg, and with the remainder located in the unincorporated portion of Dubuque County. This is with a total of 33.22 acres surveyed. The purpose of this plat is to add additional property to the existing buildings to the residential lot. The new lot will be annexed into the city of Luxembourg. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 32.05 acres surveyed, and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot two is a total 1.17 acres surveyed, and it will be annexed into the city of Luxembourg. Lot one and lot two will use existing entrances off of Highway Three. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. The mortgage holders' acknowledgement is signed and attached, and some of the signatures, again, were over 60 days old, and they included the surveyor, September 28th of 21, engineer, October 20th of 21, county planning and zoning, October 19th of 21, county Platts Officer, October 19th of 21, owner's consent, November 23rd of 21, attorney's opinion, December 7th of 21, and county assessor, October 15th of 21, county health, November 8th of 21, and city of Luxembourg, October 4th of 21. This plat, again, has been reviewed by myself as Platts Officer, has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So what they were doing on this plat is they were trying, they were correcting boundary lines here to include these buildings for this lot, and that lot will be annexed into Luxembourg.
Tammy, Supervisor McDonough, do you know why it's coming to us in late April with all the signatures back in October?
Yeah, um, this is a situation where sometimes, um, they just get delayed with somehow with family members don't get their paperwork in, or maybe the attorney hasn't gotten to it. So these sometimes become cases where we try to watch them and keep them moving forward. But I can't exactly say what happened here, but this was just one of those that sat for a while.
I can answer that question if, uh, if I'm able to.
Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Uh, basically a situation where we started it over the winter, and, uh, they need a treasure certificate on there. Treasures, uh, taxes weren't due until March. They basically waited till, uh, their taxes were due to pay them. We got the treasure certificate and started back through the process.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Yep, thank you.
Is there any harm that the signatures are old?
No, as long as these signatures come within a year of the original, and then we're fine. Otherwise, we have to ask for extensions, and so in this case, we were still met our deadlines.
Okay.
But that also kind of corresponds with Iowa code related to subdivision plats. Uh, when we set pins or mark people's property on the ground, we've got a year to get the plats filed. And vice versa, if we file a plat, we've got a year to get the pins in the ground. So one is, they're each kind of hinged on each other depending upon what comes first.
Yeah, and my only question is, you know, we have the board of health or the health department sign off, and I don't know what their signature's needed for, but if that happened in October, and now we're here in April, I don't know what can occur in the passage of time is the question really, so.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, yeah, in this, in this case specifically, and it seems like every case got its little twists on it. But, uh, the, basically, Dan Zawon is buying a little additional ground from his brother John. Uh, both of these properties originally came off their parents' farm. Um, and, uh, basically, it's a situation where, uh, Dan's been operating, uh, his cabinet business off of this property. And it just made sense that because his house and his, uh, his, uh, business are right together there, and it doesn't meet county zoning, it made sense for them to take it into the city of, uh, Luxembourg where they would have their city sewer and water. The, and the remainder of the farm that we're surveying around is, uh, is all ag ground.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any questions, Jay?
No.
Any further questions, Jan?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Zouin Acres Plat Two.
And I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of Z1 Acres. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Next, we go to action items. We have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants, and clerks.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the hiring.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants, and clerks. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have resolution to approve necessary documents with Jim Schroeder Construction for the bridge replacement on Hammerend Road, project L dash B two, three, parentheses, one, dash, seven, three, dash, three, one. That is in the amount of $579,565.75.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the doc, necessary documents with Jim Schroeder Construction. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Irman Corporation for the purchase of two railroad flat cars. I don't know if Anthony is on.
Yes, good evening.
You want to go through that, Anthony?
Yeah, so this is, um, the two flat cars that we're going to be installing on the Conrad Lane, Bridge, Bridge Replacement that, uh, I believe we sent out for bids last week. Are you guys approved for that? Um, so that's, this is for that purchase.
I have a question for you, Anthony. At the top, it says they submitted a quote for $23,290, and the grand total is $36,670.
Oh, yeah, I see that's a, that's definitely an error. Um, yeah, the $36,670 should be the correct amount. I, we probably pulled this from another resolution and just didn't correct that number, but, um, I don't have the email in front of me. I could, I could, if you want to table this for, for a little bit, I could pull up an email.
I have the email up for you, Anthony.
There, there you go. So it's $18,335 each. So that's for, that's times two. So it should be that $36,000 number.
Hey, do we want to table this until we get it corrected, or?
The, uh, the whereas portion of the resolution is correct. We can simply have you line through the top number and write the correct one in there if the board so chooses.
Okay.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question. So the Irman Corporation Lake Bluff is all correct?
Correct, yes.
A motion to approve the resolution with change reflecting the total value.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the documents with corrections to be made. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious.
Catch, Chair.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Managed Solutions Group for IT Purchase. Uh, assuming Nathan has some background on that.
Nathan?
Like you're back to be the camera, right? Good afternoon, supervisors. Um, yeah, this is for the SAN replacement that was scheduled for next fiscal. Given the supply chain challenges, I have sent this out to bid and got it returned. Now, we won't receive, I mean, if we get it before July 1st, I will be shocked, but even if we did, we won't be invoiced until into the next fiscal. Or background, the SAN is essentially probably the most important piece in the network. Nearly all the servers live on it. I mean, 90% of the servers live on the SAN, 90% of the data is there. This is where everything lives, and we need to replace this in order to get enough space for other approved capital projects over the next three, four, or five years.
Okay, it shows a total of $108,496.89. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Questions, Jan?
Question for me?
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the necessary documents with the Managed Solutions Group for the IT Purchase. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Thank you. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you for being present, Nathan.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the Northwest Arterial John Deere Road Corridor Build Grant Responsibilities 2080 agreement with the city of Dubuque. Anthony?
Yeah, good evening again. So since we are the lead agency, Dubuque County's lead agency on this, uh, John Deere Build Grant Project, and we're in cooperation with, uh, the city of Dubuque, we have to have an official 2080 agreement that, uh, that kind of ties us together and, and explains the responsibilities of both, both entities. Um, so hopefully it makes sense. We are funding this completely separately from each other. Dubuque County is funding this through our foreign market account voucher system, and the city is paying for it to their, their local voucher system. Um, so it's, hopefully it's pretty clear that, um, we're, we're separated but still tied to the hip, and Dubuque County has to act as the lead agency.
Anthony, Supervisor McDonough, who prepared the 2080? Was it our council or the cities?
Um, originally, I pulled the format together, and then I, I worked with, uh, Assistant City Engineer Bob Schizzle. Um, and, and he kind of tweaked it on their end, and then they ran it through their council. And then, um, it came back, and we had CJ look at it, and so it's, it's been reviewed by both engineers' offices and both, um, both attorneys' offices.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Jay, do you have anything?
I do not. Anthony, I assume you're recommending that we approve this?
Yes, uh, yeah, we pretty much need this agreement in place, um, to satisfy federal, federal highway and DOT, um, that we're working together on this, so I would definitely recommend this.
Thank you. I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the Northwest Arterial John Deere Corridor Build Grant Responsibilities and 2080 agreement with the city of Dubuque.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the Northwest Arterial John Deere Road Corridor Build Grant Responsibilities 2080 agreement with the city of Dubuque. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Next, we have discussion on tentative funding allocations for the RPA external applications. I had that put on. I thought we could just do a quick run-through and, uh, see which ones we felt we would move forward and which ones we were not going to move forward. And figuring on a long discussion, just kind of a quick overview like we did last time to see what we can get through in a half hour to see what would move forward and what.
You've, you've done a good job keeping us moving so far, so I appreciate it.
Right.
So last time, when we had discussion at a night meeting, I made a, a motion to table so that this discussion would be happening during our normal, our normal Monday meetings when people are present. Um, most of the folks here on Zoom, once again, are, are staff. Um, and even some folks in this room were surprised today as our support staff that this was on the agenda tonight. So, you know, um, that, that's, I think, I, I thought I conveyed that in March, that I think it's better to do this when people are expecting the board of supervisors to meet. This meeting has been typically very brief and business-only to conduct the business of the county, that Anthony thinks approved, plats need to be approved. So I would register that same, I guess, note that I think it's better transparency when we do this during our Monday board meetings, when citizens and folks are able to be present and watching from their business computers. I understand it's not a work session. It's an action item, but it's a work session in an action item format.
Right, but it's basically just Right, but it's basically just or the supervisors just beginning the discussion on what moves forward and what doesn't. I don't know that there would be public input on this section because it's the supervisors' determination what we move forward and what does not move forward, I guess.
I understand, but when we, when we have our Monday meetings, the participants on Zoom frequently exceed thirty people and tonight it's eleven and it's mostly the folks that have their computers open right here in this room. So that's the transparency. I don't dispute that the agenda was published early enough and that it's public notice. It's that people aren't aware that we would even have this kind of discussion on a Monday business meeting night. That, that's my concern, that we could do better, especially about something that has high interest from, you know, folks who are anxiously anticipating what we might be doing. So, you know, if we, I think there are some business matters we might attend to tonight um that are procedural, um some things that the budget department might want us to be aware of about how all this is going to be reported and such, but in terms of priority setting or what we choose to fund or not fund, I just would prefer to do that in a Monday board meeting when people are looking for that kind of conversation so that they can be more aware. Right now, what we're, this whole conversation will only go out to the public if the newspaper reports whatever we're saying, because there's not people, there's not people in the audience. That's, that's my point. So I'm not saying we're violating anything. It's just that I think we could do better.
I see your point. Um if I look at it as it was a, it is a public meeting, it was posted. Obviously, there aren't many people on it. I will agree with that. Um I thought there would probably be more on it with the uh on there.
Well, they don't know to look for it as an action item, right? I mean, they don't know to look for discussion under.
There's really no resolution attached to it. It's more of a, just a discussion. It, it is more of a work session than anything. It should have been under work session. I'd go either way with it.
So again, without there being any documents, it's just, I mean, I would, I would be my motion that we table even our discussion until we are in full light of our full board meeting. So, and that would just be tabling it until Monday of next week.
I guess I wouldn't have an issue with that, Jay. There are very few people on here. There's only eleven people in the chambers here.
I, I think Supervisor McDonough was correct. She said these same things a couple of weeks ago. I didn't agree then. I don't agree now. It's, it's work we can do. We've assembled, you know, in business when you're assembled, you've got all your documents in front of you, you've got all your people ready, you do the work. It's not the final stop. It's a, it's a chance for the supervisors to discuss. Um and it'll be a missed chance if we table it, but the, we'll defer to the chair.
Can see the people on the, the eleven participants are Don Sherman, Kevin. I mean, you can see it's, it's us. It's us talking to ourselves.
True, Wayne and other, Kayla Freiburger probably take offense to that. So it was on the agenda, was published. So those that showed up. One of the supervisors is saying, uh, sorry, I'm not going to talk about it. That also is unfair and not very productive. But Chair, your decision?
I'm thinking on which way to go. I uh, like I said, I I want it to be transparent, but again, it was posted. Um I understand Supervisor McDonough's concerns about it being transparent and having more people on it, but it was posted. Uh some obviously missed it, some obviously didn't. We have some people here that saw it. And like I said, we're not making any determinations for funding at this time for dollar amounts, basically just making a determination of if it will move forward or if it's something that we would decide that wouldn't be forwarded. And again, there is no public input to this section. This is just a board's decision. But I think we could move forward with the preliminary run through and just see what we come up with.
But ask for a ruling on my motion.
Pardon?
I have a motion before the board.
Good.
Motion to table.
Have a motion to table. Is there a second? Uh there's not a second. That motion would die. Move forward with the discussion regarding the topics.
Could we have Stella um when she returns, come to the podium? Our discussion today was interesting about um the difficulties in getting all this done while we have other contracts that are pending. I'm just wondering and if you could kind of fill us in with where we are with the process. And whether, some questions might be whether these things fit in, get inside the ARPA guidelines, whether we can fund them.
Sure. Um I am currently working through our first quarterly submission um with actual projects approved in it. So in the first quarter of the year, you did approve the funding of the emergency radios. So we finally have a project to report and I'm going through that process now. Um there's a lot of detail, a lot of things that will get reported on each of these organizations. And everything has to link back to the original legislation under expenditure categories. So we need to be very um cognizant as we work through it that the things requested do in fact qualify for ARPA funding. So um there may be a couple of things on here that technically would not be eligible under ARPA. Um I can give a, an example um if you need. But that's, those are the things we just need to be really aware of as we walk through it, that it ties back to the original uh spirit of the legislation, which was COVID nineteen pandemic um mitigation and uh and coming out of that. So um we've pulled down some sample from other um uh other counties. I've gotten one from Lynn County. We need to do a lot of monitoring and tracking and documenting as we move through these. So anything that you approve now will actually get reported into our next report. It's on a quarter, a quarter basis. Um but we need to uh look at contracts and start working through all of that as well.
Have you been able to hire anybody to help you with any of this?
Um so if you recall, uh the board approved funding for a budget analyst um starting July first. So over the next uh couple of months, we'll work on getting that job description out and start looking at uh at hiring that position in July.
Are you saying you need more time to deal with the first section before we get into this?
Um I wouldn't necessarily say that um that we need more time. It will take time to contract all of these. So none of these can start their projects until we have contracts in place with them.
Right, well, we're not approving anything really at this point. This would just be whether it moves forward, not for the amount of funding, it just whether it moves forward or whether it's, it dies here is my thoughts on this. Obviously, we're going to have more meetings to decide what continues to move forward and at what level of funding.
Sure. So do you anticipate denying some requests tonight?
I would think if the board all agrees that a certain one doesn't or whichever ones don't meet the guidelines, it would be denied. If all three of us are in agreement, that would be like we did with the first section.
I wondered if Ed Raiber reached out to everyone who's in these sections to let them know that there would be decisions made tonight. Did you do that, Ed? Do you want to come up to the podium, Anne?
Those pews are stiff. I this is Ed Raiber and uh um there isn't any decision points on this agenda item and I did not distribute this meeting packet or agenda wider than the county's typical distribution of its meeting notices.
So in the past, whenever we've had discussions on Mondays, a Monday morning meetings about ARPA, I would expect to see several people either present in the room and also perhaps on Zoom, and that's not happened tonight. So did you reach out to the applicants particularly?
In uh other parts of the county's process, the times that I have reached out particularly to the people that have applications were on the day in which you were intending to actually take formal action.
Tonight, we're going to deny people if we choose to, right? Isn't that what you think? So that's.
How we did it on the first, but I can sense this. I think if, you know, hopefully our memories aren't that short, you know, we, we just did this a month ago. So the board discusses, we try to build some consensus and then papers and documents are presented to us. The board has the prerogative to approve those. And we actually went from a very long list altogether in summary, remember that? And then we broke this out to individual resolutions. I would assume we're going to follow that same process.
That's what my thought was.
My thought as well. I'm not sure why we're all confused. It's uh.
Run through, just like we did last time, although last time was on a Monday morning meeting. This one isn't, but.
With people in the seats.
Pardon?
With people affected in the seats.
I understand that, but.
I do see people online that have submitted and I see people in the seats that have submitted. And I've spoken to three individuals about this as well, just that it was on the agenda, um applicant. So, you know, this isn't a surprise. And there are people present. I can continue to insist there's not people present is not very complimentary of them.
I would, uh even if they were present, it's not publicly comment during the section wouldn't be allowed. It's a decision we have to make. So whether they're here or not. I just think we could run through it and see where we stand if we have consensus among anything to move forward or those that will not move forward. I guess that's.
But that's making a decision, correct? Deciding that somebody is not going to move forward, that an application is not going to move forward is a decision. You are deciding things tonight of who gets funding and who doesn't get funding, of what amount. That, that is what we do on Mondays.
Not a final decision.
I understand that.
Understand that, right? It's not a final decision.
Consensus is what they use to create all the corresponding documents.
I understand that, but whether they're here or not, if we decide not to fund them, it's not going to make a difference if they're here or not. If we decide to move it forward, it's not making a decision on the amount of money. It's just saying, okay, it's moving to the next step where we would decide if the funding is all that they're asking for or for just a portion of it.
I'm asking for greater transparency. You don't, obviously my colleagues don't feel that, that that is required. And so let's proceed um because it's not helpful that we repeat the same things over and over. So we've taken no further action to notify anybody that this is going to happen tonight. And I'm not comfortable with that. But perhaps you are.
I guess we're not making the decision if they're getting their full funding or whatever. We're just making the decision what's moving forward and what's not. And that's what we did last time. We picked out what were the ones that uh.
So per, for purposes of transparency, I would move everybody forward. Is there anybody who would like to join me in that? And have consensus to move everybody forward at this time?
Last time we Dubuque Community Foundation, the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque, there was two of them that were denied. The Bible College was denied. Oak Crest Family Services, a qualified opportunity zone was denied. I don't recall any of them being here when we denied those. And that was just the first meeting when we ran through it and said, well, these ones are not going forward.
Again, everyone will move forward in my opinion tonight.
Including Smokestack?
All of them will move forward for purposes of tonight.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I wouldn't, can't agree to that. It's just not how I would prefer to go about this process.
That's where it would be it's going to be of no advantage to try to move this forward uh at this point. So if you want to make your tape motion to table again.
So I'll make a renewed motion to table this matter until our meeting on Monday morning.
I will second that. All in favor, we have a motion and a second to table until Monday for further discussion on this, when more people would be available. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Be tabled until Monday. Actually move to Communications. The Manure Management Plan, Circle Ridge Holstein's Manure Management Plan, Jeff Schmidt, number six, seven, two, seven, five.
Make a motion to receive and file the manure management plans.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the manure management or the receiving file and manure management plan for Circle Ridge Holsteins. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a zoning commission resignation from Catherine Caitlin. Receive and file. I would uh thank Catherine for her hours of donated time on the board.
I would thank her also for her, she's done a tremendous amount of pro bono law and legal analysis and research for the zoning commission as well. So I thank her for that. That's been kind and generous. She will be missed.
Yes.
I will make that motion to receive and file.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to receive and file the zoning commission resignation. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have open vacancies for information only. Moving to personnel requisition.
About that, Chair. So the EMS um Advisory Committee, the EMS line, item number three, EMS Advisor Committee continues to have a vacancy. Could someone, Don, could you reach out to Tom Berger and find out um what's the status there? I think we've been assuming something's coming. That's not something that normally we would expect to see um a vacancy listed in that category.
We do actually have a application for it that we reached out to Tom and asked him if he needed it filled before our regular quarterly appointments. And he said there was no meeting, so he was fine waiting if, um to wait until our quarterly appointments in June.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, it's personnel requisitions. Are there no personnel requisitions for approval at this meeting? We'll go to the public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries and I will quote prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom, Kevin?
Uh there is nobody on Zoom indicating they wish to speak.
That will take care of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
To adjourn until Monday.
A motion to adjourn. We have a second. I will second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. You are adjourned.